At the point of time to begin the meeting, we do have a quorum present. At this time, I'm going to ask Commissioner Terman that he would give our implication. Would y'all please stand?
Our gracious heavenly Father, we're thankful today for the blessings that you've bestowed upon us. We're thankful, Lord, for being able to be in this, this meeting, and I pray, God, you would touch our hearts and minds today and help us to do the right things. And I pray, God, for our country today. Lord, we need, we need your help, and I pray that you would just give us your grace and strength and help us, Lord, to, to work out the problems. I pray, God, you bless our county, touch our people that work for us. I pray in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome everyone here this morning. We thank you for coming. I don't believe I see any of my news people, people here, but I'm sure they'll come in later. But we'll, at this time, entertain a motion to adopt the official agenda.
I make a motion, we adopt the official agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and second to adopt the official agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. There be a non-motion carried unanimously. At this time, we'll hear from the sheriff, the Arnold Dennis Meeks.
Thanks, Chairman. Couple of weeks back, I was going over my budget comparison sheet and saw the overtime line item was really out of whack. And so went up, saw Ms. Petty, we got looking at it to see what that situation was. And what we found, what happened, back in September, the Children's Policy Council had given us five thousand dollars for checkpoint traffic, overtime money. The guys had worked that and actually should have been paid in September, which would have been the last, the past fiscal year. But during that time, David, chief deputy, he got pretty sick, wound up in the hospital. He was out for about three weeks. He was handling paperwork on that. So the paperwork actually did not get turned in until the first of October, which we had just gone into the new budget year. So it, the guys had worked it in September, but actually the paperwork didn't get turned in and they didn't get paid until October. So what it did, it just kinda, kinda threw it into that overtime section. Spoke with Ms. Petty, the money's there, it's just more of a clerical thing that we need to try to get cleared up. And so I'm asking for an amendment in the overtime line item to offset that five thousand dollars that is, is there and was given to us actually in last fiscal year.
We'll, we'll take action on that later down in the agenda.
The other item is about the van. You want to talk about that van?
Okay. The, there was a van that was up at State Surplus. It had actually been turned back in by one of the state agencies. It is equipped, already, was already equipped for drug task force to use or any, I guess you could say maybe undercover situation that we need to use it for. We was able to get that van at a very, very good price. And so we, we bought the van, we spoke with y'all, we got that van. And we just need to do a retro on that so that we can get it put on the insurance so we can use it.
And that's a van you paid for out of your law enforcement?
I did, yeah. I, I bought that out of the law enforcement.
Any questions?
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we do not have anyone on the agenda for amendments on the citizen, but I need to recognize the probate judge, Judge, Judge Fallon, didn't I say him?
Yes, sir.
Would you like to say anything?
No, sir, thank you for the opportunity, but I don't have anything this morning.
Also, I would like to recognize Chuck Patterson, the newly elected revenue commissioner, which has taken office October the first. We're looking forward to working with him. At this time, I'm going to call on County Engineer Darren Capps to report on the bid award for Lime Rock.
Yeah, page two of your package, you see the two items we bid on gravel base. We had one bidder, Connector Dirt LLC, two-ten per cubic yard, which was a good bit higher than last year, it was a dollar seventy. But my understanding is the oil companies hitting him pretty heavy and he charges higher rates. Anyway, that's the only option that we have for that. And on local lime base, everything stayed the same as the last time we bid it, except for number one, premium clean rock, used to be seven fifty, now it's twelve. But what we mainly use is the standard fine crush run, ten dollars per ton, and it stayed the same. Never see or paid logging. Only it. But I also like to tell you that we have a local in the county and we do not have to bid it because it's in the county and it's also ten dollars per ton. So we use both places.
Or you use whichever one is closest to your job site.
You reckon he would meet with that, meet you standing on your clean rock there? Or have you talked to him?
He doesn't have all the options down here. He just has mainly the crush run. Yeah, that's about what we get anyway. Every once in a while, we might get something different.
And, and that bid has already been awarded.
Right.
We did that at last minute. Gave, gave him, we gave the county engineer permission to accept the low bid. This time, we'll move into the new business. The first item is approval of the minutes of November the sixth of a regular meeting and November the twentieth, a special meeting. I have read the media, I see no need of correction. Do I have a motion to approve?
I second.
Second.
Martin moved and Harold saying, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. There be a non-motion carried unanimously. Now, we come down to the item to ratify the purchase of, of the van for the sheriff's department, which was purchased with law enforcement funds from his office. It's already been done, we just need to ratify that action that he took.
I make a motion, we ratify that action.
I'll say.
If I could make a comment here, the only, since the sheriff paid for it, you know, the, the only reason for the commission's involvement here is it has to be titled to the county commission. So therefore, that's why you had to approve the purchase.
We have a motion and a second to ratify that action. All in, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. There be a non-motion carried. Now, we look at the, ratify the payment of one-time pay supplement in November. Ms. Petty, I believe we had, when we adopted the budget, it was supposed to be done in December and we...
That's, that's correct.
You go ahead and expand on that.
Well, in, in talking with several of the department heads, they were requesting that the, the one-time pay supplement be paid in the last week of November, before Thanksgiving, so that the employees would have the money to Christmas shop on Black Friday or that weekend. So with y'all's permission, we did, go ahead and did that. We just need to have it in the minutes that that amended the provision to pay it in December instead of paying it in November.
Did you stipulate they had to spend all that money in covenant?
I didn't do that.
Okay. So that one-time payment has already been approved, it's been paid, we just need to ratify that action of, of the early payment.
I also move that we ratify that.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is second, we ratify the action of paying the one-time pay supplement early. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. There be a non-motion carried unanimously. As you have previously heard, the sheriff is asking for a budget amendment due to the, it covered two different fiscal years of what is the pleasure of the commission. And entertain a motion to approve the five thousand dollar increase in his overtime budget.
I make that motion, we approve that five thousand?
Approve, aye, second.
We got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carried unanimously. Next item is our county holiday schedule, and that's for calendar year two thousand and fifteen. You'll see a copy of that there. Or is there any questions or do we have a motion that we approve this suggested holiday schedule?
I make the motion, Chairman, we approve the holiday two thousand and fifteen.
Okay, I second. Have we got any holidays that felt like they did last year? Where they were...
Yes.
I think that needs to be discussed and it may need to be a part of this motion.
That's what I was getting to.
That's why I wanted to catch that before we went any further. Last year, we had an issue of a, a day and we just paid that day and let them not come back to work.
Right. I looked at the calendar and I talked with Ms. Petty. Christmas falls on Thursday and New Year's falls on Thursday. And I suggested that we take a furlough day that if the offices would not be closed, but if personnel wanted to get paid during those two days, they would take a day of, of leave on that.
Mr. Chairman, I don't believe you can do it that way because I think you're going to have to designate that the offices are closed. Otherwise, if the office is open and everybody in the office wants to be off or has vacation time, you have no one to run the office.
I see.
Now, that's what has been done in the past. The county has declared the office is closed. It is not an official holiday
Okay.
that the people in, in the office, if they have leave time, they can use their vacation, not sick leave. They can use vacation, comp time, or the, it has been led to the department heads discretion to let them make that time up later. But of course, they have to keep up with it. But I don't believe you can leave the offices open and...
So on this motion here to, to deal with two thousand and fifteen, we need to amend that motion to close the office on January the second.
Second. But it would not be a holiday.
But it is not a paid holiday.
It would just be a day that the offices are designated closed, but the employees can use leave time if they have it or work it out with a department head. And on the Christmas, if you want that to, let's get that covered too.
We're going to have to amend the, the previous holiday.
Not really, you can just make a motion aside to say that the offices will be closed December twenty-sixth, same thing. Really needs to be two motions. One needs to be to address the fifteen schedule, including the, the date of December, I mean, January second. And then a second motion to go ahead and say that the offices will be closed December twenty-sixth.
Of two thousand and fourteen.
Of two thousand and fourteen. I really think it'd be better if you did two motions on that.
So right now, we're looking at a motion to adopt this holiday schedule with the offices to be closed on the second?
Of January.
Of January.
Second of January.
I add that to the motion to close the office on the second of January along with the fifteen-day holidays we have in fifteen, two thousand and fifteen.
And I have a second on that.
Mr. Norby.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt a two thousand and fifteen holiday schedule with the office being closed on the second day of January.
Well, we need to back up and get to twenty-sixth.
Get your vote, get your vote.
I got to have a vote now, I've got a motion on second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. There be a non-motion carried unanimously. At this time, we'll entertain a motion to close the office on December the twenty-sixth, two thousand and fourteen. I so move.
I second.
Mr. Chairman.
We already have a holiday on the twenty-fourth. Is that already a day off holiday?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
So we'll be off on the twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, and then the offices will be closed on the twenty-sixth.
That's, that's my understanding.
Twenty-sixth would be Saturday. Oh, I'm looking at two thousand and fifteen. So sorry.
I was looking at that too.
Was you looking at that too? I'm glad you were looking at that.
That's my understanding, Christmas is on Thursday and we'd be taking the next day off, which would be the twenty-sixth.
Right.
And same thing with January. All in, I said, did we take a vote on that?
No, no.
This time, I ask for, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. There be a non-motion carried unanimously. Next item is our current contract with Albritton and law firm expired in November. So we need, we officially without an attorney.
Should I leave?
And he's just, and they doing it, I think, free gratis, is that right? For the month of December? No, but it's normally a three-year contract and they have graciously agreed to keep the same pricing mechanism in. So you'll see a, a copy of that resolution. So at this time, I will entertain a motion to adopt that resolution, eleven, twelve, twelve oh one.
I make a motion, we adopt that resolution.
Second.
We have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. There be a non-motion carried unanimously.
Thank y'all very much, I appreciate that. I'm grateful and thankful.
Well, we appreciate the work the firm has done for us and
Thank you.
with you taking the point position when Ms. Moody was appointed judge. We, we appreciate that and we've enjoyed working with you and look for...
We appreciate your openness and the way you, you know, you handle things and always there to, you know, have a, a time for us to ask a question, you know. That means a lot to us, you know, instead of, you know, thinking we're asking you something that is really not that important sometimes, you know.
I appreciate that.
Any other comments? There be a non, we'll move on to the next item. That's a resolution for the two thousand and fifteen severe weather preparedness tax holiday. Mr. Soler, are you here to address that? In the absence of Ms. Ash? Okay. You'll see the paperwork in front of you and, you know, I need to know what the wishes of the commission is.
What percent is this?
It's a tax-free.
Are they tax-free?
Our, our two percent.
Your two percent, it's all you.
It, it, all of them, but you're not going to pay for your clothing, whatever you buy.
This particular resolution refers to things that are used in an emergency, like severe weather.
Chainsaws.
Chainsaws, batteries, maybe protective clothing. I'm not sure that might be, but anyway.
Generators flashlight.
Generators, yeah. Things like that.
But it's a two percent. We don't give a big one to get off your purchase, right?
That's correct.
That'll be February the twentieth through the twentieth second of two thousand and fifteen.
I make a motion that we adopt this resolution for emergency purchasing.
I second it.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion of adopting the missed tax holiday, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carried unanimously. Okay, next item is authorizing agreement with Aldo for widening and resurfacing project number STO twenty-eight-eight-eight dash oh-two-oh does not mean anything to me, Darren wants to come and name of it.
Basically, it's the widening and resurfacing Steel Pond Road. Part of it's a little bit's in Lockhart, part of it's in the county and part of it's in Florella. And, you know, because of the bridge construction, they closed State Road fifty-five. And most of that traffic is heading on that road and it's a narrow road. And it's getting, it used to have a hundred and twenty cars a day, now it's got twenty-four hundred cars a day. And it's rapidly deteriorating. And the state was willing to help us on this road in an amount of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of state public road and bridge funds. And we'll have to do the matching of a hundred and twenty thousand, whether it's in kind or, or payment. Total cost is four hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And this can be done fairly quickly. The contractor said they could start next week. You know, we have a annual, annual in-place bid for plant mix. And all we gotta do is give them a P.O. number, they can start to work. We just gotta get this agreement executed and get it signed by the state.
And this is going to be contracted?
Contracted, right. Well, we're going to do some shoulder work and see.
What do you think it's going to cost and what we're going to get out?
It's, four hundred and seventy was initial estimate and the three fifty from the state and about a hundred and twenty.
That's including widen that road too, correct Darren?
Widen.
About three miles.
Three point seven miles.
Three point seven. That's widening a four foot, correct?
Ah, in the curve, the other is two foot each side. The curve would be twenty-two foot total in the roadway. It's now seventeen, it'll be twenty.
I think at, you know, times of essence, there's not much traffic on it. The sooner we can get it done, the more we will eliminate some of the safety factors that we got there because... I do know that, I was told that this past week or so, there was one speeding ticket for seventy-five mile an hour on that road and it's a thirty-five mile an hour.
They wait when they got started on it.
They'll, they'll keep going through it, same as like we do any other road. You know, pilot car.
They'll squeak and halt, won't they, Sharon? They'll be coming till squeak and halt, won't they? You won't catch nobody running seventy-five in on police.
Well, well, it may be.
Well, they resurfaced eighty-four and fifty-five and they have more traffic.
What's the timeframe on the complete?
Oh, they should have a meeting.
I know we're going to be faced with a, with a traffic jam with the holidays coming up, but I also know when spring break comes, it's going to be ten times worse than this.
Yeah, right.
About in four states comes through there.
I would make a motion that we adopt this resolution without a doc.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of the, of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. There be a non-motion carried unanimously. A next item is consider a resolution commending Ms. Petty for her years of service here at the commission. We have that written out. I would like to have a motion that we adopt this resolution.
I so move, Chairman, we adopt this resolution. Ms. Page?
Second.
We got a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. There be a non-motion carried unanimously. I did not intend to re-... ..................................................................................................................... At this time, I'm going to declare a... I wish...
You say?
.........
.........
Tom?
Thank you.
Congratulations on your reelection.
I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it.
I saw your sister last night.
You did? Thirty, thirty exactly.
Thirty in three months.
Three months, yeah.
All three times. Anyway.
You got twenty-two for him.
Standing there talking.
By January.
And I said, "Mr. Terman?"
Yes?
Yes, I said, "Mr. Earl Elmore Jr., will you come on this over and let it go?"
Working on it.
She got another Elmore in her.
Yeah, she got Elmore in her.
Hey, you got beat pretty bad, huh?
We got all three games.
Hey Darren, I did call, that's the best, but it hurt him.
Okay.
Did you find anything about that sign?
I sure did. Uh, I had a drawing of it. I bet you I left it. There's two curves. Over there by the cooks, Indy Goodwill. And they only meet, you said it was thirty or thirty-five on there?
Thirty.
When they meet thirty-five. But now what I can, and this is close to the, uh... It's that Hester Store Road here. So what I could do is put a thirty-five here to start with, then when they pass these curves, I could go back up to forty-five. And then right here, I can start with forty-five and right in here, go back to thirty-five. That'll...
This bush right here.
I didn't even realize it. Now, we might, we might have did it because it was new and it had loose rock, you know, it's never been going back.
It wasn't... I don't think it was really that thick either.
No, it's just a double circuitry, it's not planned.
But even wrong, I'll take it off.
It might be next week. That's right.
I tried to call your phone this morning and I couldn't, it won't even ring. I called twice and it never would ring. I just blanked, yeah. I don't know why. It's the right number. Just wouldn't do nothing. I just sit there and then I tried it again and it's in my phone. I just called somebody else.
If they'll come back, maybe I shouldn't oversee us, is that right, huh?
I don't think they want to move. We ain't got the block. That's all right, we getting through already. Good time to be in the cow business, ain't you, Ken?
Well, when I'm here, I heard they sold some three hundreds for four something, in dope the other day. I don't know, man. Four twenty pounds or something like that, that's a three hundred.
It got to be a stopping point somewhere.
Waiting on calls.
I'm, I'm...
I hope it stays up for a while. I need to, I need some new cows. I'm scared they high.
You can't chase it. You can chase it, but it bites you.
That's what I'm scared.
You know, you know where they are right now? You know they're going to come down, it's just a matter of how long.
There's no question of when.
Yeah, that's right.
If you know when, let me go.
I ain't gonna know when. I ain't gonna know when. But it is a bad time to be buying it.
I heard they gonna, I heard three more years and then they gonna be, and then they gonna be a seven year...
They don't go to bank and borrow on three more years either. I said, "Don't go to bank and borrow on three more years." Nobody knows.
In ninety-five, whenever they got up. It's gonna be good forever and it won't settle.
We got to swap that gun. We do that probably next week.
You have eighteen hundred dollar pair?
We got, we got several, we got a new one.
I don't check the people I know.
That's why I'm scared.
I just, the right of ways are looking pretty good.
I mean, the grass is good.
Mr. Terman is back, we will, we will reconvene. Mr. Thurman is back, we will, we will reconvene at this time.
Y'all better, y'all better be proud I'm in here.
That's right. This time, I'm gonna call on, uh, county engineer Darren Capps to give us a report of the results of ALDOT's inspection of our road system.
Yeah, turn to page fourteen, you're booking. And during our twenty fourteen inspection for the county paved roads, our score averaged up to ninety two point six four, which was four tenths up from last year. And we went from eighth in the state for its ranking to seventh in the state. So I'd just like to let the commission know that and appreciate all the work our guys do on the roads and keep them in pretty good shape.
Or you, can you say that and have that same report for the dirt roads?
Uh, well, there's no grade for those, but I would think they were a lot better than they were three years ago.
They sure are.
I think we've had a break here in the weather and that's helped us a lot. You know, not being dry for some things to get done on these dirt roads and kinda got us at a better point than it was.
We have about, is it about six hundred miles?
Six hundred and thirty miles.
Dirt road.
Paved road, six hundred and seventy dirt road.
Oh, seventy. I thought it was six, six thirty. I, I got them crossed up.
A lot of road.
Six thirty paved road and six seventy dirt road. And, uh, let's see, four hundred of them's in District Four, ain't it?
No, two thirds of them, a half of them are in District Three, Commissioner Thurman.
A lot of roads in Covey County.
Sure is.
Okay, without anything else, we'll consider a motion to, um, approve the county's payable and pay road tolls for October and November.
I make a motion to approve the county's payable.
I'll second.
Have a motion to second to approve those, um, county's payable and pay road tolls. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. There being none, motion carried unanimously. Next item is authorize the solicitation of bids for the Senator Suri Menos for jail addition and renovation project. Kevin Kennedy, is he in here?
Yeah, there he is.
He's moved on.
Uh, if you want to say a, a little bit about what, what the intent is to authorize him to solicit bids for this project, it's a specialty construction.
That's all. If y'all, if the commission would just allow me to, uh, put this project up for bid, um, so we can go ahead and get it underway, um, I don't know the exact date. But as soon as we can, we need to get it out for bid, uh, probably two or three weeks to receive the bids so that we can award it. So that the sewage, uh, man, you know, we had a contract or we had an agreement with the city to provide this, um, sewage mulcher thing and we need to get it in place. As close as we can to the time of this construction being completed so it'll all tie together. Um, and I believe the comple- completion date was moved four or thirty days, but it still should be in February sometime, so we need to get this project underway. If y'all would allow me to, um, put this job out for bid.
If we take this action now, you can have those bids back in prior to our January meeting and then we could award it.
I, I would think so, I would hope so.
Now, I have a motion to, uh, to.
Aye. Make a motion, we put him to work.
Okay, we have a motion that we, uh.
I second it, Ken.
Solicit those bids with Kevin Kennedy as the point person on that. All, uh, we got a motion to second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. There being none, motion carried unanimously. I guess this is an annual thing to, to declare depositories for, for our funds.
It is actually, the, uh, code section that's referred to there, um, says that prior to the first, or December first, or something related to December, you should do this. Um, we just let it slip. These are, these are the list of all the banks in the county as we know them. And because the different offices like to use different banks, all of your funds that you control are at Cadence Bank, but the different, um, elected officials have their choice. This, this allows them to use any of the banks in the county.
But, but, uh, enumerating all of the banks, therefore, at any point in time, if we desire to change, but we can without having, because they already are approved.
Because they're already designated, correct.
I have a motion to that effect.
I make a motion.
I have a second.
Second. Joe, Joe did.
I have a motion and a second to designate all banks within Covey County as depositories for county fund. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. There being none, motion carried unanimously. This, this time we have two, two, um, appointments that needs to be made for boards. One of them is the Southeast Alabama Regional Planning and Development Commission. We have, uh, one, we have one, uh, person who has wished to express an interest to serve, and that is Mr. Ralph Wales. Uh, do I have a motion to appoint him at this time to this?
I'll second. We appoint Mr. Wales to the, uh, fiscal planning development.
I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion to second, appoint Mr. Wales to this position. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. There being none, motion carried unanimously. Just let me say as an explanation, this is a alternate member, so in case one of the original, uh, the regular members are out, he can go and represent that person at the meeting. Uh, the other one is Department of Human Resources Board of Directors and, uh, uh, for their appointment there, we do not have anyone at this time. Um, we can carry that over to the next meeting without taking any action. Is that correct, Ms. Petty?
Yeah.
Uh, the appointments to be made in January, needs to be made is the Southeast Alabama Rural Planning Organization Policy Committee. And Mr. Carl Thurman, you're on that, presently holding that position. Don't look at me like that. You just got to wear many hats in these jobs.
Yeah, I reckon too.
And the other appointment is to the same, uh, is the South, Southeast Alabama Regional Planning and Development Commission, and that's Mr. Kenneth Mount. And that has to be an elected official, is that, that's correct, did that? I think that's right.
Yes, that's correct.
It has to be. And, and Mr. Mount is currently a councilman for the City of Antelope, but anyway. Whoever feels oppositions needs to fill out the proper paperwork so Ms. Petty will have a record of who, who ends up applied to be appointed. So, Mr. Thurman?
Yes.
If you don't fill out the paperwork, you won't have to do another job.
I'll be sure and do that, Mr. Thurman. You don't mind filling it out and I'll sign it.
So we'll move on down to, is any other comments from board? Any, anybody wish to make any other comments at this time?
I'd like to make a comment. The chairman, uh, wish all the people of Covey County and neighboring county Merry Christmas and Happy New Years. And, uh, I'd just like to thank all the employees that works with the county, what they do for the county. From supervisor on up to engineer, the administrator, especially just like to thank these ladies that works in administrative office here. We'll have, somebody having retirement tomorrow, I think it's at three o'clock. And she'll leave out here at the end of the year, but she gonna come back and help us some as they need help, so I know y'all ladies are proud of that. I'd just like to thank y'all, what y'all do for the county. Y'all are hard ladies, keep us straight here and I appreciate it. Wish all the county employees, courthouse, I said just about back, I wish his employees Merry Christmas as well. Appreciate him always coming multiple times to meet in, our meetings and our kid and shared, uh, cared a while ago, he's back there sitting aside, uh, trying to find out what's going on at courthouse over, she's not over anymore. But, uh, thank y'all. That's all I have to say, chairman.
Anybody else?
Yeah. Oh, yes, I wanna, you know, thank all the workers for what all they've done for the year, uh, throughout the county. And it makes everything, you know, everything seem to be overall pretty well, you know, going good to win everybody and, uh, departments and. Really appreciate that, appreciate what people do. And, uh, I know, well, we've had some, went to a meeting in Montgomery. And, uh, we got some things that's gonna come up next year, I don't wanna put it down for on the holiday seasons, but it looks like next year, we're gonna be faced with some things, you know, as far as. What the state don't wanna do and want us to do more of and less fundings and we're gonna have a challenge before it's coming up next year. Uh, and I'm just, I know it's, we got the people that's gonna be there to, to accept that challenge and, and do what we can to, but it's gonna, it's. Everybody's saying, you know, the money's not gonna be there, it is, and, and they want us to still do our stuff and, uh, it's not just the county, it's the cities and everybody, uh. And, you know, there's just some things that goes, that's coming and we're just, we're just gonna have to see where they fall. And it's gonna be, it's gonna be a challenge and, uh, but, uh, I know it's, it's even on federal levels, so we're talking about, you know, taxes and things that's gonna be changed, you know. Foreign tax, I mean, on the, uh, for the farms and, uh, you know, farm deals, uh. So, it's gonna affect everybody, uh, but then, like I say, we, we here to help each other and do all we can to help each other and we thank each, everybody for what they do now. And just hope everybody has a safe and happy holiday season.
Well, I'd echo what the other commissioner said about appreciating the work that everybody's done throughout the year and Ms. Petty and, and her staff helping us and you people. Try to get her a little more indoctrinated of what we need to be doing and how we go about doing it. Um, and I wanna wish everybody a Merry Christmas. We, like Mr. Norrie said, we're gonna be faced with some challenges, but I think we got the people in place to handle it, so we'll do the best we can.
Mr. Carl?
My sentiments exactly. I, I wish everybody a ha- a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And, uh, I want us to continue to work together, continue to, uh, strive for the goodness of the county. And appreciate everything everybody does. And, uh, this is the last meeting that Ms. Petty will be administrator of this county. This ends her tenure. And, uh, I'd like to say, uh, the last ten years, she's sure helped me and I appreciate her so very much. And every question I've had has always been an answer. Might not been the answer I wanted, but has been an answer. And, uh, I appreciate it and, uh, like I say, uh, we welcome Karen aboard. She'll be here at the next meeting. She'll be the new face on this group. And, uh, I'm looking forward to the next year, working together and striving together and trying to make ends meet. Because like the men said, at the meetings, we were told, there's some things that's gonna take place, it's gonna really affect us. But we're just gonna have to handle each one of them as they come and do the best we can. And I appreciate y'all and I appreciate all the efforts by the other employees, the road crew and the people over at courthouse and, and everywhere. It's just, we, we just got a good, good county, got a wonderful county and I'm, I'm proud to be part of it. And I, I, uh, I pray for it every day, every day in my prayers. I pray for the county and the employees. I really pray for some of them real hard.
You gonna call out my name.
No, but, uh, I appreciate them all and I appreciate all you commissioners, the chairman and, uh, engineer and Mr. Tom, appreciate him. Appreciate all y'all, me and hip and us from working with us. God bless y'all.
I'd just like to say, yes, echo sentiments that has been expressed here already and I think, you know, working together and, uh, pulling together and staying in the trace. We can move forward and meet any challenge, meet any challenge that, that's placed upon us and, and we are going to have some challenges from a financial standpoint. But we can work that out, just as a matter of interest, uh, far as the airport is concerned, the, the last information I have is. In all probability, will not be a tenant in that building during fiscal year two thousand and fifteen. But we know, we can wish and we can hope.
We can.
A miracle.
We can.
But that, that, that was one of the, I guess, one of the major curves that was through, thrown to this commission this, this calendar year is when we had to pick up that bond payment.
Yeah.
And we, we had to take that money out of our operating budget rather than having a reserve to draw upon. The other thing I would like to say, and I just, uh, make a comment to Mr. Gary Petty, I think your schedule is fixing to change. And we do, well, thank you for your support and, um, Brenda, working here and working it all and so, y'all enjoy it, uh, you deserve it. Uh, any comments from the staff?
I'm silent.
Silent.
I just wanted to inform the citizens, uh, that they already know that our EMA office is taking applications for, uh, FEMA grant for individual safe shelters. Uh, it's through the twenty third of this month, started Monday the eighth. Um, we put it in all the local media. Um, it's a, uh, individual safe shelters, it's a seventy five percent payout from FEMA, up to four thousand dollars of the total cost of the, uh, shelter. So just want anybody to know that that didn't already know about it.
Are, are you receiving many applications already?
Had several, yes, sir, sure have.
And those are for the, you can get the above ground or the in-ground type for people that.
That's correct, yeah. People are handicapped or whatever, can't go down the steps, they do offer some above the ground, yes.
How does above ground work?
Uh, it's a steel structure.
Oh.
That's, uh, bolted to concrete.
Yeah, that's been some questions. Everybody thinks storm shelter, you gotta go down a hole in the ground. And some people are not physically able to maneuver that, so.
The majority of what's installed locally are in-ground, but they do have above ground available for people that can't enter the.
There's an above ground one at L B W out there at apartments.
Right, these are individual for just a, a single family.
Yeah, I know, but it would be similar to that if you wanted to see what one.
The big old guns there.
Where at now? Where's it located?
L B W.
At the apartments over there.
Over there at the new apartments they built this last year.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, when you go up and make a layup, it's coming right back in there.
You can see some of them.
Yeah, yes, uh, I've heard it is, it's pretty nice.
But the applications are available in our office. Got any questions, then call us. And, um, hope everybody does. We got, um, grant for about twenty two for the county, is what's available right now.
When is the cutoff again?
The twenty third.
Twenty third.
Yes, ma'am. It has, has to be completed and turned in by the twenty third.
What does the units basically cost? Just the units, not cancellation?
We haven't got any current prices. When we did the last grant, which was about two years ago, they were running anywhere from forty seven hundred dollars to six thousand according to the size and the style. So, we're gonna pay up to four thousand dollars of that total cost or seventy five percent, whichever. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the staff? Do you got anything?
Would you make a motion that we adopt?
I shall move. Move your bark.
All in favor, staff?
Aye.
Let's get her signed, because it's, you know, I gotta get the seal on the last, so I'll get to it.